Cool. Did we ever find someone?
Yes.
Good evening. There being a quorum present, this regular session of the Howl City Council is hereby called to order on Tuesday, June 17, 2025, at 6:00 PM under the Open Meetings Act of the State of Texas. Members present, Mr. Woods, Mr. Price, Mr. Tyler, and myself. There is a quorum present. Let's please remove our hats if we have some on and silence our cell phones and let's stand for the prayer and the pledges, please.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day and thank you for the opportunity to serve the city of Howl. We ask that you will give us wisdom and discernment in all the decisions that the council makes on behalf of the city. It's in your precious holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
And now it's for the pledges of the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in its stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now the Texas flag. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you and please be seated. The City Council invites citizens to speak to the council on topics not already on the agenda, excuse me, not already scheduled for public hearing or on any topic on which the City Council has authority. Citizens may address the council for a maximum of two minutes. The council is unable to respond to or discuss any issues that are brought up during this section that are not already on the agenda other than to make a statement of specific factual information in response to a citizen's inquiry or to recite existing policy in response to the inquiry. Except for public hearing items, please submit a public comment form to the mayor. I have not received any public comments forms. Did anyone have one?
Yes, sir.
If I could, go ahead and bring it up to me if you will. Yes, sir.
First meeting.
That's okay. All right. Philip, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If you want, go ahead and if you will speak your name. I'm sorry, Philip.
Hardwick.
Hardwick, okay. And if you will, just give your address and then you're welcome to make your statement. Yes, sir.
Okay. My name is Philip Hardwick. I reside at 826 North Hughes, which is right down the street. Wait, I guess it's all down the street. 75259, 459. My comments are in regards to the Boil Notice that just came out. We are a new family that's been here for about six months. And while I understand that the Boil Notice was probably something required by the state and an abundance of caution and that there's no real public safety harm or that was required, right? But being a new resident, we had no idea. So we didn't, you know, we did get signed up for red code.
Oh, yeah.
But that didn't, we didn't find out about red code even though it's on the website. We didn't really find out about it until yesterday. And even though this recent Boil Notice really isn't a real public health problem, we understand that. If it had been, we just didn't know. And so my comments are just that maybe we can do a little better at whether they be street signs or like the little signs you put in the street or something like that because we ended up finding out from a neighbor. And we're even on the Howl Facebook page. And so and you'd posted the other day that there was a citywide, but then when you directed towards the website, the Howl website, it didn't really give any clarification and it was very hard to find information. And so I'm really just here, I was coming anyway, but I'm really just here to kind of say, you know, I feel like we could have done a better job because it might have been something serious, whether that just be signs on the street, on the side of the street that are temporary. And that's my real comment is that as a new resident that has only just now gotten into the real society that we're building here, I feel like we could have done a better job because we just, you know, we've been drinking the water for three days. And I understand it's really, it's probably nothing. But if it had been something, we had no idea. So.
May I ask a quick question?
Yes, sir.
When you mention a sign on the street, what would you recommend, what are you proposing the sign on the street would say?
We've got a few major thoroughfares, right? You know, Horton, right, Hanning, I mean. Hanning, five on the other side of the highway, places where the majority of us drive through every day, you know. And I know we're a small town, you know, but we got a lot of communities, community members to come out to build the park. And even if I, if we had a volunteer like, oh wait, I mean, I would, I would have happily put them up, you know, I would have happily gone out and put them in. But just something that just say, hey, Boil Notice, sign it. Because we didn't even know you could sign up for Code Red until this morning. And it's just, we missed it, you know. And I, again, I understand that it's really not a big, that it was more of a procedural thing that we had to do. But if it had been serious, we would have been drinking the water for two or three days. And so that's my honorable comment.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Were there any other comment forums that were not turned in? Okay. We're moving on to our action items. One, discuss, consider, and act upon accepting the resignation of Sarah Myrick to the City Council effective May 21, 2025. Does the council wish to discuss this item? And if not, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Ricky is going to make a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Chad is making a second. All in favor, show, say aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? None are opposing, so motion passes. Number two, discuss, consider, and act upon approving Nicole Fay to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Does the council wish to discuss this item? And if not, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Sean is making a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ricky's making a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None are opposed. Motion passes. We will now go into, have a quick recess for the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I will also sign in Ms. Fay. So our time is 6:07 PM. Ashley, do you want a photo? I'm going to swear Nicole in for P and Z for the paper.
That's what I was looking for.
All right, if you will, raise your right hand. And repeat after me. In the name and by the authority of...
In the name and by the authority of...
The State of Texas.
State of Texas.
I, Nicole Fay.
I, Nicole Fay.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the Howl.
The duties of the Howl.
Planning and Zoning Commission.
Planning and Zoning Commission.
Of the city of Howl.
Of the city of Howl.
State of Texas.
State of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability. And will, to the best of my ability.
Reserve and protect.
Reserve and protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Your name has to be signed right there, please.
All right. I hereby call this Planning and Zoning Commission to order at 6:10 PM. Citizens may appear before the Planning and Zoning Commission to address items not listed on the agenda in accordance with procedural rules as determined by the meeting chair and by submitting a public comment form to the chairman or chairwoman no later than the conclusion of agenda item or call to order. Do I have any, anyone here that would like to speak? All right. So our first action item is to discuss, consider, and act upon naming a chairman for the Planning and Zoning Commission.
What's going to take it?
I need a motion.
Y'all hang in it. Y'all hang in it.
I'm fine with taking it. I've been acting as secretary. I know I'm sort of acting as chair tonight, but yeah, I would be honored. So.
Okay. Then I would make a motion to nominate you as chairman, chairwoman.
Okay. Thank you. Any seconds?
I'll second.
We're going to let you second. Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Do I vote? Okay. I mean, okay.
You can also abstain in this situation.
Well, I'll abstain in this case. So we had unanimous pass. Okay. All right. Moving on. Looks like the item passes and I will be appointed chairperson. Okay. So continuing on. Monty, interrupt me if I'm making any mistakes. We're going to discuss, consider, and act upon naming a secretary for the Planning and Zoning Commission.
What all does that entail?
Yeah. Yeah, primarily signing plats. And then I guess if I can't be present, facilitating the meeting, correct? Am I leaving anything out?
Meeting notes? Do you take notes for meeting minutes or anything like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
She typically does. All right. I'm going to nominate Sharon. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right. Ed seconds. All in favor? Show of hands. Any opposed? Any abstain?
All abstained.
Just one. Okay. All right. So it passes and Sharon.
Tell me your last name. Carol.
Sharon Carroll will be our new secretary for P and Z. All right. On to number three. Discuss, consider, and act upon the approval of the minutes of the meeting from May 20th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve it.
All right. Ed motions.
And I second.
Okay. We got a second. All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Passes. And number four, discuss, consider, and act upon the Ponderosa Point Conveyance Plat. You have some information for us, Monty?
Yes.
You should have the information in your packet as far as the conveyance plat. It's only referring to the addition and removal of easements, does not conflict with zoning. Our engineers checked with the previous plat submittals and confirm, confirmed that approving this plat would be perfectly in order to move the project forward. Our engineer, Tim Porter, is here. If you have any questions, I'm sure he'd be willing and able to come up. But city staff does recommend approval.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody want to discuss this any further? Do I have a motion?
All motion approved.
Okay. We got a motion here. Sharon's going to second. All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Passes unanimously. On to, I think, the last item.
Yeah, I think 35.
Okay. So I'm gonna, do I read the ordinance first and then open it up for public hearing? Okay. All right. So next, we're going to discuss, consider, and act upon ordinance number 835. Ordinance number 835 is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Howl, Texas, amending Howl zoning ordinance as amended to rezone attractive land consisting of plus or minus 468 acres of land located in the Joseph Hayhurst survey, abstract number 530, and the John H. Miller survey, abstract number 834, Grayson County, Texas, in the city of Howl, Grayson County, Texas, heretofore previously zoned Plan Development District 3, PD3, providing that the tract is hereby rezoned as a planned development district and placed in the planned development district 3A. So that would be PD3A zoning classification. Describing the tract to be rezoned, providing a penalty clause, savings and repealing clause, severability clause, and an effective date, and providing for the publication of the caption hereof. So I will open this up for public comment. Does anyone have a comment they wish to share? Okay. Sir, if you want to come up and speak into the microphone. Thank you.
My name is Mark Paxton. I live at 1703 Monaco Drive in Allen. And I'm here representing my family who owns, I guess, some adjoining property. I was mailed this notice for tonight, but I didn't get any data that said what we were coming here for. It says we're amending the ordinances. Is there, is there something that I should see to... Do we have a plat? Is it, or is it just for the planned development?
Monty?
I called City Hall and asked to come by and they said, excuse me, they said I had to come to the meeting. So.
Monty Walker.
Yeah, Mark Paxton.
Nice to meet you. We've got, this basically is for Hilltop Ranch property owners. They've approached us about reconfiguring the original plan development that was over there at Blath Road and 75. It does include rezoning, reconfiguring the concept plan. So as far as, we have a preliminary plat and then a concept plan, which would be here. I know your property is up further north, but these are, yeah, we have commercial, multifamily, wastewater treatment plant, water station, fire station, fire acreage of five acres, and then the platted single-family home development.
So why, why am I here?
Well, we notify, we have to notify anybody with property within 200 feet.
Okay.
So, yeah, the state's hatchet requires from the rezoning changes to the publication in the state. And we issue notice letters verified within 200 feet. So your property was put in the zone with notice. We receive a letter. Just want everybody else to get that.
So this shouldn't have been included in the mailer?
It doesn't have to be. Doesn't have to be.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't have any comments.
Thank you, sir. Do I?
More explanation?
Yeah, I would appreciate it.
I would like an explanation.
And we also have the developer. He's here as well. Just really quickly. So there were some, what I would consider fairly minor changes to the configuration of the residential. And because a planned development is basically planning a whole area. So it's kind of a big picture zoning where you lay out it all in one zoning. So rather than zoning, having five cases, one for multifamily, one for commercial, one for residential, one for a school site, you do it all in one. So that's why we are replacing the old PD3 with PD3A. So it was just simpler to do it all as a, a new ordinance. If you compare the old ordinance to the new ordinance, the main change is the very last page, which is the concept plan. And the changes to the concept plan, and I'm going by memory, but my memory serves me that in the bottom right corner, which would be the southeast corner, there had been some commercial down there. And it was determined by the developer that that would be better suited to remain as residential. So that commercial corner has been changed to residential. The, there's been a site created for some water storage in the upper left piece of that division. And also the city site stays up in the right corner. We added the actual zoning categories for those areas of water storage and the wastewater treatment plant. Its location did not change. All we did was add the, the manufacturing zoning so that that is already stated in this. And then the other change is, is that on the left side where you have commercial on Highway 75, the, the intent was, was to make that more of a strip similar to what you see with development along Highway 75. So the, the new developer on this decided that that is too deep to be commercially viable. So you would have buildings behind buildings which would not be commercially viable. So that has been changed over to multifamily. And so if I had to pick something that was the major change, that would be the major change. Everything else was, was basically very minor.
Thank you for that. Does anyone else have any comment? Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing. And any discussion further? Any other questions? Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right. Sharon motions.
Where's the motion for?
To accept.
Okay. To accept changing into PD3A. Okay.
I'll second.
All right. Ed seconds. All in favor? Any opposed? It's unanimous. So it passes. All right. If there's no further business, I hereby call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting adjourned at 6:24 PM.
Good job, chairperson.
Oh, wait, 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 never mind. Forget everything else. Forget everything else.
We will now return to open. We will now return to open session and the time is 6:27 PM.
We will now return to open session and the time is 6:27 PM. Yeah, sorry. I got it.
Sorry, I flustered everybody.
That's. Monty got me off track. Sorry. We'll move on to the mayor comments. Uh, Howe-Hump Day Networking Breakfast is held every first Wednesday of the month. And this month, coming months, uh, breakfast will be held on Wednesday, July 2nd, uh, 2025, from 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM here in Summit Gardens, and everyone is welcome. We're gonna move on to the mayor brag moments. I have actually, um, three brags. So first, and, um, I'm gonna ask that if you're in the audience, just to wait until I get through recognizing everybody verbally. Um, or I guess I could actually have you come up when I call you. And Monty, maybe I'll let you pass these out for me if you will. So the first one we're gonna recognize is, uh, Chief Jake Sullivan. And we're also gonna brag on the Howe Police Department. Chief Sullivan has been successful in administering the first Howe Police Department Citizens Police Academy from, which was held from April 3rd, 2025 to May 15th, 2025. I did not recognize him or the police department last month because he had to be at Chief's school and he was absent. Uh, Chief Sullivan has a level of commitment, commitment for our community and collaboration with other agencies. The Citizens Police Academy offers citizens an inside look at how the local police department operates, fostering a better understanding and stronger community police partnership. I was one of the first students in this Citizens Police Academy. And I can personally testify that it was very educational and I do highly recommend, uh, others attend, uh, in future academies. And Dalton Doss was here, was in it as well. So he's here tonight. So additionally, I wanna brag on the Howe Police Department and other agencies who participated. They did a fantastic job. Thank you, sir. Do you want, should we get a picture together or wait? What do you think?
We're gonna wait.
Okay, all right. We won't make you stand up here the whole time. So I also wanna brag on Jerry Davis from Public Works. I don't see Jerry here tonight. But, um, it was reported to me by City Administrator Monty Walker that Jerry oversaw the successful water conversion from the east to west and avoided major catastrophe. The conversion was completed on June 13th, 2025. We did have a small water leak the day after, no fault to Public Works. However, Jerry and the Public Works kept the city of Howe supplied with water other than for about 10 minutes. Jerry, we appreciate your level of commitment to the community and to citizens. Let's give him a hand. And last but not least, I wanna brag on Dalton Doss from Public Works, and he's here in our audience. Uh, it was brought to my attention by a citizen that Dalton responded to a call they made to the city on June 13th, 2020, 2025. This citizen informed me that they are elderly, they do not have internet, and they are not on social media. The citizen called the city to express their concern about low water pressure and discoloration of water. Justin Johnson from Public Works immediately dispatched Dalton Doss and Dalton immediately came to the citizen's home so he could personally tend to the citizen's needs and concerns. The citizen expressed their gratitude for the city's quick response and wanted to give a special acknowledgement to Dalton for his kindness and his genuine concern for them. Dalton, you made them feel very important and you helped resolve all their questions and concerns. And Dalton, we appreciate your level of commitment to the community of Howe. Thank you so much. Let's give him an, a. So if you will, let's, um, come on up and let me give you your award. And, um, council, I'd like for us to take a picture. Code act, Monty. Hang, hang tight. Don't go anywhere. And then for Dalton, very, very much, and that's through the letter as well. Thank you so much. Do you want to even up here? All right. Ready? All right, thank you. Moving on to executive session, the city council will convene and close session pursuant to the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551, Texas Government Code, executive session as authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071. Consultation with an attorney on a matter in which the duty of the attorney of the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter, Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, deliberation regarding real property, Texas Government Code, Section 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations and Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, personnel matters. Consultation with attorney, development matters and procedures, economic development matters and procedures, real estate, city council approval, uh, excuse me, city council appointment. And the time, we will now go into exist, excuse me, we will now go into executive session and the time is 6:34 PM. We do not anticipate this taking us very long, just so y'all know.
It's great.
Yeah. There's. That is. I'm. Two. So. My. Uh. Not. Um. So. Um. Going to. Try. So. After. My. After. We. For. Now. I can't. Five. And. So. That's. That. Five. I see. Not. Right. So. Then. Next. All. You. It's. Large. No. Personal. Things. Or. I do. And. So. Very. So. Nobody. You. You. Same. Thing. Is. Here. It's. Yeah. When you. Work. When you. Find. So. Changes. So. Slow. By. My. As. A little. Way. It's. Not. Uh. I really. Came. I. Know. Where. The. Things. A little. Do. That. Much. That's. All. Right. And. Actually. I. Was. Yeah. You know. I need. My. This. And. I'm. If. You know. All. Right. Yeah. Or. And. And. Really. Awesome. First. Number. He. Was. So. It's. Not. That. We. Got. It. Just. Oh. And. Your. Did. You. So. So. Okay. I would. Why. Time. If. I was. Here. For. The. I. Think. I'm. Yeah. 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 That. He's. But. Somebody. Has. Been. Sure. They. They. So. Social. Building. Only. And. So. So. Probably. We. For. Not. There. To. That. It's. That. Some. Of. Us. So. Yeah. It's. Com.
Wish your shirt. I like it.
We will now return to open session and the time is 6:50 PM. Moving on to. Action items. Three. Discuss, consider, and act upon appointment of Ed Whitfield to replace the vacated city council seat occupied by Sarah Myrick. Does the council have any questions or discussion? And if not, do we have a motion?
I have a motion to appoint Ed Whitfield to replace a vacated city council seat occupied by Sarah Myrick.
All right. So Sean is making a motion. To approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Chad is seconding. Do I? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None are opposed?
Yep.
None are opposed. Motion passes. Congratulations, Ed. So now I'm going to swear Ed in. Come on over. Anywhere you would like. So Ed, I want to need you to raise your right hand. And then you can put your hand on your Bible. And if you will, just repeat after me, please. In the name and by the authority of.
In the name and by the authority of.
The state of Texas.
The state of Texas.
I, Ed Whitfield.
I, Ed Whitfield.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of.
The duties.
Go ahead.
Of.
City council member.
City council member.
Of the city of Howe.
Of the city of Howe.
State of Texas.
State of Texas.
And will.
And will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The constitution.
The constitution.
And the laws.
And the laws.
Of the United States.
And the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Let me get you to sign right here for me.
I think that battery was about. That. Thanks, sir. Appreciate it, man.
Moving on to our consent items. Are you ready for me to move on? Okay. Moving on to our consent items. These items. These consent items are non-controversial or housekeeping items required by law. Items may be considered individual by a council member making such requests prior to a motion and vote on the consent items. One. Discuss, consider, and act upon items which are marked by an asterisk. These items are minutes of the regular council meeting, May 20, 2025. Bills being paid for the month. Detailed check register report. Statement of revenue and expenditures. South State Bank, secure deposits, May 31, 2025. Recapping standings, May 2025. Does the council wish to discuss any of these items? And if not, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Ricky's making a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Sean is making a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None are opposed. Motion passes. Action number four. Action item number four. Discuss, consider, and act upon Ponderosa Point's conveyance plat. Monty, do you have anything that you would like to share with the council?
Just. Not. Anything that we. We discussed. TMZ.
Okay.
I can. Go over again.
This is for Ponderosa Point, only referring to the addition and removal of easements. This does not conflict with zoning. Our engineer who's here has checked the previous plats submittals and confirmed that approving this plat would be perfectly in order to move forward with the project. Again, Tim is here. If you have any questions, he'd be the guy probably to direct them to. And I believe the conveyance plat is in your packet.
Does council wish to ask any questions of our city engineer? If not, are we ready to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the plat.
Okay. Ricky makes a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Chad is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None are opposed. Motion passes. Item number five. Discuss, consider, and act upon financial report. Do you have anything that you would like to say, Monty?
Mayor, council. You know, a few months ago, we adopted an investment policy. And so we've got a few months history now on making these changes. I'm proud to announce in May, our investing strategy has continued to reflect good decision-making with the ability to accrue 10,892, 81 in interest with all of our city-owned accounts. The EDC has also benefited from the strategy by accruing 1,465, 73. In comparison, before our investment policy changes, the city accrued 1,262, 24 in December and $282.68 for the EDC respectively. As we get into the slow income flow months for the year, every little bit helps. And I think these. These changes have been drastic. Logic, the government pool is currently yielding 4.40%, while Techstar is 4.27%. Our CDs mature at South State at the end of May. And, you know, there was thought that, you know, initially I had thought that we would probably let those lapse and move those funds over to Logic and Techstar to accrue more, you know, a higher yield. But. You know, after thinking about it, if the Fed will ever make a rate adjustment down like we anticipate, then I think the CD would actually benefit us more, even though it's a 4% interest rate. I feel like it's a little bit of a risk, but it's the most safe risk with government funds. So we went ahead and renewed the CDs for another six months at the 4% rate so that if the rates, you know, do drop, we'll still have the 4%. Whereas the government pool funds could actually be lower than that, depending on what that Fed rate is. So I know a lot of homeowners and one particular person trying to sell a house would love the Fed to get it in gear. But while they're up there, we'll continue to reap these rewards of pretty good rates. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
All right. Does the council have any other questions? If not, do we have a motion to approve the financial report?
I'll motion to approve the financial report.
Sean makes the motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ricky makes a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any abstaining? None are abstaining. Motion passes. Moving on to ordinance number 835. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Howe, Texas, amending Howe's zoning ordinance as amended to rezone a tract of land consisting of 468 plus or minus acres of land located in the Joseph Hayhurst survey, abstract number 530, and the John H. Miller survey, abstract number 834. Grayson County, Texas, in the city of Howe, Grayson County, Texas, heretofore previously zoned Planned Development District 3, PD3, providing that the tract is hereby rezoned as Planned Development District and placed in the Planned Development District P3A, PD3A. Zoning classification, describing the tract to be rezoned, providing a penalty clause, saving and repealing clause, severability clause, and an effective date, and providing for the publication of the caption hereof. We will now open this up for a public hearing. Do we have anyone from the audience that wishes to make a comment or speak on ordinance number 835? Since we do not, we will now close this public hearing and return to open session. Number six. Discuss, consider, and act upon ordinance number 835. Does this council need further discussion on this or explanation? And if not, do I have a motion?
I'll motion to approve.
Chad is making a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I second.
Sean makes a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None are opposed. Motion passes. Moving on to discussion items. Departmental reports. Howe Police Department. Chief Sullivan.
Madam Mayor, City Council. So for the month of May, we saw a 7.1% increase in call volume. That's still holding us at 55% increase overall for year-to-date. We ran into a couple of issues where we had some criminal mischief take place in a couple of our subdivisions. We made some staffing adjustments, which also led to a decrease in citation revenue that you'll see in stats. Currently reviewing two grants. One of the grants, well, both of them are from the Department of Justice and other community-oriented policing. And one of them will give us an opportunity to refund some of the money that we've invested in, in our technology and to gain compliance for accreditation. They did warn that it's very competitive. So, you know, they're very challenging and very tedious and find unique ways to kick you out. The other one is what they call a cop staffing grant. It'll allow us to apply for a grant and hopefully get a salary and benefits for an officer. But there again, it's based on a competitive basis. So I'm evaluating that process. We had one staffing challenge. As I've shared many times, in October, we started our best practices, policies, and procedures, which allows us to prepare to become accredited. Those policies and procedures require us to have some internal audits in place. That internal audit led to some deficiencies involving one of our officers, subject to internal investigation and also recovery. So we do have one current open. Officer McFadden still continues to go through his field training program, but having 20-something years of experience, he's got a few weeks left. We feel that he's in good shape to pursue forward to serve our citizens. As August 31st comes near, it's our T-Cole Required Angle Training. So we have so many hours of training we're required to have as an organization. There's also some mandated training in there. For the month of May, we accomplished 173 hours. There again, that's not hours that we use for academy. Those are in-service hours, special need training hours. You know, as I talked about staffing, you know, we have ran into a couple of scenarios. We're having one officer at night has put us at somewhat at risk. One of our officers facilitated a traffic stop on the highway. The individual was intoxicated, tried to fight with our officer. It took us 12 minutes to get him assist. So as I've said many times, you know, I know it has to do with the funding, but I do have some great concerns having a solo officer at night. When we talk about statistics, we ran 179 calls for service compared to 167 in previous years. Overall, the department, we're moving forward with some of our technology. Our citations did increase, as you saw, compared to previous month. We did drop down to 61. But as I said earlier, part of that had to do with making some adjustments to deployment so we can hope to either hold offenders accountable or effect an arrest. As the mayor graciously awarded, we did complete our Citizens Police Academy. We are working through our curriculum that we utilize for this academy to prepare for our next one. My goal is to have one sometime after the first of the year, as time allows. Other than that, we're doing great things.
Awesome. Council, do you have any questions or comments for chief?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Howe Police Department. Chief Robert Manay. Oh. Sorry. Howe Fire Department? I don't know what I said. Chief Robert Manay.
Mayor, council. Congratulations, Mr. Whitfield.
Thanks, sir.
In the month of May, Howe Fire Rescue ran a total of 63 calls for service. We ran multiple fire calls, MVAs, a few grass fires, and still mainly EMS calls with our EMS. We've been preparing. We've been very busy preparing for upcoming classes that we're fixing to do. We are sending three of our employees to Teak's Annual Fire School at College Station to do agriculture rescue for our tractors, combines, anything like that, specialty in rescuing in those incidents. We're still making changes to our policies and procedures to advance our training for Howe Fire. We have started our annual recertification process of our air packs that we wear and our cascade system, which is our breathing air machine, how we fill our air packs in the fire station. That is a requirement to do annually for TCFP inspection that we did go through. All of our deficiencies that we did in the past have been corrected and we are now up to date in code compliance with TCFP as a fire department. We have. We had another EMS employee start fire academy this past month. And that is going to put all of our EMS as dual-trained for fire and EMS, minus one of them, which she cannot go through fire school at this time due to being pregnant. So. Our. We're still doing more certification classes through some of our officers are doing instructor courses and officer courses to further advance our trainings and our ways. Hopefully, if we knock on some wood, we get a little break from the rain. But be, please be careful of any low-lying areas, ponds, creeks, as water can rush and sweep you off your feet and hard to fight that. And I appreciate all the time. Any questions or comments?
Go ahead.
Oh.
Oh, I thought.
I do, actually.
Yes, sir.
Do we do any swift water training?
We are starting swift water training. We are going to send, we have to do a process of rope training first, and then we go to swift water training. So I'm anticipating, I'm hoping to have the ropes done by the end of the year, and then swift water in the spring for next year.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments from the council? All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. Public Works. Mr. Walker, Walker will speak on Public Works.
Mayor, council. Public Works carried out 104 service orders during the month. Eight new meters were set, six meter leaks repaired, five water main leaks were repaired, 22 disconnections for move-outs. They mowed 38 hours. They completed 12 sewer main backups, 190 hours on wells, reporting, and chloramine conversion. Chloramine conversion is complete and are now operating on one pressure plane with water from both east to west sides of town mixing and working well together. There is work on fine-tuning the system and flushing main lines. Will be going on for the next couple of weeks. Public Works has a lot of overtime and has stayed overnight last week having to keep an eye on water levels and continuing flushing. This has been quite a project. I do want to say I'm very, very, very proud of our Public Works crew. I know that there, there's been a lot of leaks, and there's going to be a lot more now that the summer's here and the ground's going to shift. But I tell you what, we have individuals that love citizens. They may not love the infrastructure, but they do love the people. I'm very proud of them. They work many hours around the clock. And, you know, we were very, you know, it was unfortunate. We got through the conversion of the water and everything looked pretty good. And then we had that massive water leak that left the citizens without water for 10 minutes. And anytime you have water pressure loss or water loss, you have to issue the boil notice. And it's unfortunate because, you know, we don't ever want our citizens to have to go through that situation, but we have to do what is required by law. And we're going to be transparent about that. But it's just, it's still unfortunate, but I know our guys are working very, very hard and battling this old system. And as these new developers come in, we'll be able to replace some of those.
Any questions for Mr. Walker from the council?
I got one for you, Monty.
Yes, sir.
The Connections Park, who's responsible for mowing that?
That is still Connections Park at this time until it's conveyed over to the city when they, when they're completed.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. City Secretary, Ms. Hewitt.
Mayor, council, our Public Works Service Order software is now live. We've been using that since the beginning of June. Portal access and training for the department has been completed, and everybody's loving the new system. Training on the employee portal is also complete for all employees, and it's live for all departments. We actually submitted our first electronic time sheets this past payroll period, so that also is going to save us on some paper. We've upgraded our credit card reading machines to be compatible with FundView. This has posted payments directly into FundView, which means that it's reducing our processing time and it avoids clerical error. We've also switched our cell phone service providers, which is going to be a savings for the city. And we're in the process of updating our phone system since our previous system was not secure and vulnerable to hacking. This updated system is also a cost savings for the city, and we estimate that that's going to be done within the next two weeks. Independent Financial, as you know, has merged with South State Bank. It was quite a huge conversion, but we successfully converted all of our users to their new platform. We also have our mobile meter reading system, which is used for Public Works, and it has been updated and implemented into FundView, and we're working through those software updates. We had hired Ms. Cynthia Signs to be our permit clerk. Unfortunately, at last minute, she declined the position, so we had to start the hiring process again. But we have successfully obtained a candidate, Ms. Candace Cochrane. She comes from the City of Prosper and has permit experience and is a current permit technician for the City of Prosper. She will be beginning actually Thursday. We have begun the audit for 2023. I've entered the missing journal entries actually from March all the way through June, so we are now current on all missing journal entries. So it's ready to go for our consultant. The building doors to City Hall have been updated. They are secure now with key cards, so we have that additional safety for our employees. And also with the help of the Police Department, we've had panic buttons installed for all of the employees so that we can be feel safe within the building itself.
Any questions from the council or comments? Thank you, ma'am. City Administrator, Monty Walker.
Mayor, council, I could have used that panic button a few months ago when we were negotiating with BVRT. Collections report on court. The court collection total for the month was 20,216,05. That indicates the hard work that our police chief and his staff are doing. They're very busy, and it's reflecting on this paperwork. Also, the permit list, we had one single permit and five new construction permits for the month. Our CGMA report as far as our consumption of water, we took in 7,478 gallons, or million, million? 7,478,000 gallons for the month of April. And that's the last report we had. So we're staying about steady, you know, with our water consumption. So it hasn't been a drastic increase. As far as my report, current developments that are underway. Noble Ridge 1A, 171 homes. Of course, Noble Ridge 1B, 177 homes. Ponderosa Point, you know, contracts have been signed, as we've discussed previously, with Taco Bell and 7-Eleven. They're looking at a rezone of their PD for added commercial use. The NRP group is under construction on the north side, and it's a multifamily with 300 units. Grace Meadows was approved last month, 51 half-acre lots. They're free to move dirt. Hilltop Ranch, 1,376, thereabout, single-family units. Updated PD tonight, thank you very much. Saddleback is constructing the first of seven homes on Bandera. And we're nearing some other development agreements and planned developments. Howe Meadows, Form to Mud, are working towards annexation, 762 homes. Talbot Estates, 65 half-acre lots, working on annexation documents there, which will, as you may remember, requires us to run a water line through Central Park, which we'll be doing. Let's see. We've got the... Oh, as far as that goes, I'm on the agenda for the Luella SUD board meeting for July the 7th for CCN matters between Luella and the City of Howe. Centurion American Development Group, 669 homes. They purchased Phase 2 and Phase 3 of Noble Ridge. We're in PID discussions with them and some other discussions. Early-stage developments, Enlow 9698, consisting of 844 proposed lots. Astra Companies, 355 lots. Hightower at Bennett Road 902, which is 101-acre lots on 100 acres. And then I've mentioned to you last month about the 81 acres at Howe Cemetery Road and Boast Road. We found out that partially, it was partially annexed, and they had, they had started moving dirt and things like that. It was a particular development that the city wasn't real excited about. And when they found out it was annexed, they put it on the market. So I think, you know, that's a pretty good win for us at this point. Code enforcement, we've ordered two rounds of mosquito fogging. I don't know if I put the dates on here. They're on the website. I went ahead and put them on the website for when they'll be coming around town to do that. I think one is June 19th, so it's coming up in a couple of days, I believe. And then one in July, which may be the 26th, something like that. But it's on the website. All of our street projects are underway. Young Street, I don't know if you've noticed, back over here, there's detour signs and everything's staged and ready to go for that reconstruction. They're also replacing a sewer line under Young Street. But when they get done, they'll be resurfacing a section of that street as well. And that's part of a block grant that we got several years ago. Personnel, Chief Sullivan had to replace an officer. I think he mentioned earlier, he was on administrative leave, and he's no longer a member of the Howe Police Department. Michelle mentioned that we thought we had a full-time permit clerk hired from the City of Sherman, but at the last minute, that fell through. But we have a new, a new permit clerk starting Thursday from the City of Prosper. So we had 17 applicants, which is a far cry from what we used to get around here. So that's a good indication of where we're going and the changes that we've made. Now BVRT, I know they're in the House. They're close to finalizing the land purchase. They're under contract, so that's good news. I think James mentioned maybe, no, I don't think he did. Survey, survey's being done. So that looks like that's progressing very nicely. Talked about the water. You know, the situation with the water the other night, the Saturday night, after we'd made the conversion and, you know, sometimes when you're... Seems like every time I celebrate, something happening very good for us, you know, you spike the ball and it comes up and hits you in the face. And that was certainly the case Saturday night. We had, you know, the well 2 over here on the west side wasn't pressurizing up as normal, and our guys were pretty on top of that. And it notified me that we probably have a leak somewhere in town. And they drove around all day Saturday and couldn't find it. Well, they finally found some water puddling in a remote area, far away from where anybody goes. And on top of this little water was two giant trees that had been there forever. So we had to call some, some, some guys in to excavate and take those trees out. And when they took the trees out, it created a big, big, big problem. And it was a four-inch main that started just gushing water, and it started draining our towers pretty quickly. We thought for a moment that, you know, we wouldn't have pressure issues, but as the thing took, you know, longer to repair, we ended up having pressure issues and then water loss for a period of time. So because of that, we had to issue the boil notice. I liked Mr. Hardwick? I liked Mr. Hardwick's comments earlier about some yard signs. I think that's a pretty good idea that we could utilize going forward on, you know, the intersections of Hayning Street, along that corridor, some of our thoroughfare, you know, heavily trafficked thoroughfare items. You know, we do all we can. We, we put it on the website, we put it, you know, code red. We, you know, we shared it on Facebook, you know. It's hard to reach everyone, but I think, you know, going the extra mile is something we've been willing to do. And I think yard signs, it's not a very expensive, you know, situation for us. And I think we could probably look towards doing that, and I appreciate your comments. I've been asked to moderate the DFW Retail Mixed Use and DFW Industrial Forum during the industrial portion. This is a huge opportunity for the City of Howe and myself. It's going to gain us a lot of exposure. This will happen in September. The EDC has sponsored it at a platinum level. So we'll be, you know, sending some EDC members down there as well. We'll have a booth. But, but to be able to, you know, just to be asked to be a moderator at that industrial conference is, is, is pretty nice. I've met with two nearby businesses this past week that want to relocate to Howe. The problem is, we have no vacancy at this point. But we're, you know, we're working on things, you know, such as I've talked to y'all about. We're working on some things to try to open up some spaces in Howe. We're looking for investors to build spec buildings, which is not easy to do. But I do know that if we, if we had places available, they would be filled very quickly. I think every, you know, all the investors that I've talked to and the real estate brokers that I've talked to over the past, since we signed the contract in April, all of a sudden, our southern portion near Mr. Vick's property down there is gaining a lot of attention. And I mean a lot of attention. And some pretty outlandish type, you know, things are being kicked around on those properties between Blythe Road and LB Kirby and Howe Cemetery Road on both sides of the highway. So there's some good opportunities there. We feel really good. If you didn't hear, Blythe Road, you know, we've always had that strange situation where it's Blythe Road on the east and it's, it's Farmington Road on the west, and it connects to another Farmington Road going north and south over there. You know, about seven or eight years ago, I petitioned the MPO and the county commissioner to do something about that because I can see how that's going to be a 911 disaster at some point as homes go up in that area. Josh Marr, I got to tip my hat to him. And also, previous county commissioner, Jeff Whitmire. He always said, "Get with Van Austin and y'all come to some agreement." Well, it's taking enough time, and Lane at Van Austin has been great to work with over there. Reached out to Lane, and we came to an agreement to just extend Blythe all the way down to Farmington Road and put it in front of the commissioner's court, and they adopted that last Tuesday. So I'm very happy that we possibly could avoid some 911 scenarios in the future. Sales tax, I'll finish with that. Our sales tax for the City of Howe for the month of June came to 56,562.97. Of that amount, the EDC will get $14,140.74. And with that, that's all I have.
Monty, I was going to mention that the mosquito fogging will be held on Wednesday, June 25. So that's a week from tomorrow at 8:00 PM.
I was getting my months mixed up. Just glad it's happening because I know some residents are having some issues right now because it's that time of year.
Yes, all the rain.
Rain has been crazy.
Any comments or questions for our city administrator from the council? If not, thank you, sir. If there's no further business to come before this council, this meeting stands adjourned at 7:26 PM. Thank you and have a good night.